Clinton meeting if everybody could stand for the pledge and remain standing for the invocation. Thank you, Kevin. All right, Kathy.
Roll call Commissioner Keller. Commissioner McMullen.
President.
Commissioner Ramos.
President.
Vice Mayor Satterfield.
President.
Mayor Taylor.
I'm here. Thank you. Okay, we've got a few special presentations tonight that are kind of cool, I think. So we're going to start off first with Lake Apocla Natural Gas and I'd like to invite Brett up to the podium, please. I think you got a really good one tonight. How are you doing Brett?
I'm doing great. So Mayor, thank you all. Thank Mayor, Commissioner's staff for having us here tonight. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Brent Haywood. I'm the, I'm the General Manager CEO for Lake Apocla Natural Gas District. Lake Apocla Natural Gas has been your gas provider here since 1959. We've served the communities of West Orange and South Lake Counties with safe, reliable natural gas. Our vision is to be the choice of consumers for energy service within our service territory. And we're committed to delivering excellent customer service, fostering employee engagement, enhancing the quality of life in communities we serve. This past year, we actually celebrated 65 years of service to the local communities. And again, this year, we're celebrating another milestone, which that's what we're here about tonight. We're celebrating our 30,000th customer. For a local distribution company to be 30,000 customers strong, that's a big testament for us. And so we're here, without further ado, to recognize our 30,000th customer, who is actually a resident of Oakland. And that's William Ron Rodriguez is our 30,000 customer.
Did they, did they make it?
Maybe coming in.
Mr. Rodriguez? Oh, you're missing time. That would have been terrible Brett.
My time is impeccable. So, 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 so you just missed the big intro, but.
By the way, have a seat.
But again, we'd like to thank Mr. Rodriguez and his family for being 30,000th customer for Lake Apocla Natural Gas District. So we've got a couple of things here for you. We've got a memorial plaque for you. Great thing to have up in your house. But most importantly, from the district, we're giving you a one-year complimentary gas service up to $1,000. So. Yeah, yeah. If you don't have the pool yet, this is the time. But again, we'd like to thank you all for coming, even though we're, our timing was impeccable. But, but, but from Lake Apocla Natural Gas District, I'd like to say, you know, from the heart of myself and most of my staff is here tonight. We're taking up a lot of seats. We're going to give those up here pretty soon. But we're honored to be the energy provider for the city of Oakland. And if you all are not aware, we have what we call our Energy Choice Initiative. And we hope to be the choice for energy here in, in the city of Oakland for years. We thank you all for having us tonight, Mayor.
Thank you Brett.
Thank you all for having us. So without further ado, I'll, I'll hand the words over and hopefully we can get a picture.
All right, yeah Brett, let's get a picture with everybody, yeah.
That plaque fell a little bit better. That was pretty cool. He walked in just right in time. That was good. All the way, the third back, all the way on the end, red shirt. Right here, Larry. Seated down.
All right. Everybody find a seat. Guys want to sit down? Anybody want to sit down? Okay, so we have a very special presentation tonight. If I can invite Coach Kempel to come up. Coach. Congratulations. All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this right real quick and it's. The Town of Oakland Larry Kempel Day is what we're calling. Whereas the Town of Oakland proudly honors individuals whose lives and services have made a lasting impact on our community. Coach Larry Kempel began his teaching journey in Central Florida in 1989. Answering a calling to uplift and guide young people, especially those in need of direction, belonging and encouragement. Over the course of his career, Coach Kempel became more than a physical education teacher. He became a mentor, motivator, and steady source of support for thousands of students across Central Florida, including at Oakland Avenue Charter School. Where he is teaching was described as rewarding, supportive, and marked by adaptability. Coach Kempel's legacy includes building strong and engaging PE programs from the ground up, securing grants, forging partnerships, and creating unique experiences such as the Starlings Inner City Volleyball Club and a Winterfield Day that included sledding and ice fishing. Really? His dedication brought global talent like Adrian Ben Hagi. Hagi, okay, that's close. To perform for students helped raise over $100,000 for Jump Rope for Heart and inspired young athletes, some of who earned full collegiate scholarships through sports introduced in his after-school clubs. Coach Kempel has always believed that physical education is about more than movement. It's about building character, gratitude, resilience, and joy. His daily encouragements to give 110% or don't do it and to learn from life's curveballs became guiding principles for his students. And his students will forever remember that Coach got us, a testament to the trust, humor, and unwavering care he offered every child who walked through his gym doors. Coach Kempel retires this year with plans to write, travel, serve through mission work, kayak, bike, and yes, fish. All while continuing to live with the same curiosity and heart that he brought to his career. In recognition of his extraordinary career and as the 2025 Champion Charter School Teacher, it is fitting that we honor Coach Kempel for the joy, energy, and integrity that he brought to our town and the, and the lives that shaped along the way. Now therefore, I Shane Taylor on behalf of the Town of Oakland Commission do hereby proclaim May 13th, 2025 as Larry Kempel Day in the Town of Oakland. And hereby encourage all citizens to join in celebrating Coach Kempel's exceptional service, enduring impact, and the remarkable, remarkable legacy he leaves behind.
Thank you very much.
My name is Pam Twire. I'm the Principal at Oakland Avenue and I've had the pleasure of having Larry on the staff for a number of years. There's not enough words to tell you about how wonderful of a human being that Larry Kempel is. And if you've been able to be around him, you, you feel it from the minute you're in his presence. It's been a great honor to be on a staff with you and take, get to know you through the years. I am so proud of the legacy that you leave behind and thank you for your time and effort. And I'm here to tell you that you're also the 30,000th customer at Sunny. But I don't have any money to give you, so I'm sorry. So Larry, yesterday we recognized Larry for being the 2025 Florida Charter School Champion Teacher. This is in the state of Florida. So we honored him yesterday with an assembly and I just wanted to make sure everyone had an opportunity to see this. And with the presentation, we did provide him with what we, what the words that were put together by a number of individuals to nominate him for this prestigious award. We are really, really proud of you and we're glad we get to keep you for a couple more months for the bus. But we're going to miss you and I'm hoping you're planning on taking those cats.
I've never seen a, a retirement speech, so hey. But I wanted to share with you not only the gratefulness for the town and of course the school over there with Pam and stuff. And, but it kind of all started with Janice and a friend of mine, Karen Cologne, who knew me and kind of put in a good word for me and kind of helped me get in the door. Cause that's kind of where it started because this milestone is more than most of you realize or can see because throughout my education, I was never supposed to be an educator. From the very beginning to where, without getting personal here, of a dad who said I wouldn't amount to BS. And then to go through education and my department head said I was going to be an embarrassment to the university and turn that all around and be able to stand. Not just stand here today, but I almost died three times, three different times through blood clot and through heart stents that had to be put in, intestinal infection. It almost killed me and I never thought I'd get here. I mean, this means a ton to me, but at the same time, and I'm so thankful for my family standing behind me. And they know a lot of what I've had to go through and have went through. Not say other people don't go through stuff, but you know, there is, the good Lord had his hand behind me without a doubt. He's the one that helped me through that. If it wasn't for him keeping his hands under me, I never would have been here and I never would have made it. So here I am, but thank you guys so much. And the town has been tremendous. I appreciate it so much.
Yeah, right here. All right. Yeah, you can't go away. Along with this great honor and again Larry, I don't even know how to thank you and what you mean to us at the town for what you've done for the school. So thank you and thank your family from the bottom of our hearts. Along with that, we've got a video we want to show last week or a few weeks ago was the Principal Day. And there was a really interesting video that circled around. So some of you probably seen it. Some of you haven't seen it, but I have to tell you, when I saw it, the first thing I thought of was just wow. The second thing was I would like to bring that to the commission so that everyone can see this and share this with it because it's such a, it's such a treat. And being a manager of people for as long as I have and I'm old now. You know, I know that the greatest testament to the job that you do is the people that you serve. And for the principal, the people that she serves are the children, their families, and the staff. They put together this video for her that will just make everyone cry almost probably as much as Larry's crying over there. But in, in, in our book, that couldn't give us anything but an ace scorecard. We are so proud to have you as our principal that it is phenomenal the job that you do. So given that, if you can show the video.
Absolutely nothing special for you. Other than a heartfelt thank you.
Good job Pam.
You guys could all go drink with Larry and.
That's right. All right, we'll give you guys a chance to, to get out.
Welcome. Slip out? He doesn't work here anymore.
See you next time.
That sounds weird.
Okay, moving on, we have one more proclamation and this is kind of an important one. It is the National Public Works Week People Purpose and Presence. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are all vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the Town of Oakland. These infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector. Who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems. Public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. It is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the Town of Oakland to gain knowledge of and to maintain and an ongoing interest in understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. The year 2025 marks 65th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association with a theme of people, purpose, and presence. Now therefore, I Shane Taylor, Mayor of the Town of Oakland, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through the 24th, 2025 as National Public Works Week. Urge all citizens to pay tribute to the public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protect our national health, safety, and quality of life. Thank you Mike. Thank you.
Let's give Mike a hand. Come on.
Thank you. Thank you Mayor. How do you top what just happened in here?
You're our 4000s.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, but thank you and you know, we'll keep doing what we are doing and hopefully it'll all work out.
Thank you Mike. All right, moving on to our fourth item on the agenda, the consent agenda. On the consent agenda are the minutes from the 4/22/25 Town Commission Regular Meeting. An employment agreement, Town Manager and Town Clerk. That is officially welcoming our Town Clerk. Update on the temporary change and check signatures. Anybody have any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make them.
Please. Second.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, all right, we got another important matter here. This is the Appointment of Planning and Zoning Board Recommendation in an Oath of Office. If, if you are not aware, we had a board.
That's right.
On this one I'm talking about? Yeah. Oh, consent agenda. We did. I did. And I said all in favor and everybody was laughing.
I said aye.
Mike said, you want to do it again, just to be on the safe side? Okay. All right.
Pay attention.
A lot of excitement in here tonight. All right, so as I was saying, the Planning and Zoning Board Recommendation Oath of Office. We had a sitting member on the Planning and Zoning that had resigned after serving for one year. In that, one of our residents, Ed Kulikowski was an alternate. So he is eligible to be appointed if so confirmed by this board to sit as a sitting member on the Planning and Zoning. So with that, would anybody like to make a motion for Ed Kulikowski to take that seat?
I'll make the motion for Ed Kulikowski to sit as a full member on the seat of Planning and Zoning.
Again. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, Ed, come on up. Where you at? Again, all right, Ed, let's raise our right hand. Aye, Ed Kulikowski. Somely swear to or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And will obey the laws of the state of Florida. That I will in all respects observe.
That I will in all respects serve.
The provisions of the Charter and Code of ordinances of the Town of Oakland.
Provisions of the Charter and Code of ordinances.
And I will faithfully perform the duties as a member of the Planning and Zoning Board. Enough. Congratulations. Thank you very much for serving. How about a big hand for Ed? Come on.
Yep, right there.
All right, so moving on to other policy matters, B we have is our unpaved streets improvements. And as you recall, we had asked Public Works Director Mike Parker to come up with a prioritization of the program and funding. So we'll turn it over to Mike. Hi Mike.
Hello. So during the past few years, there's been some limited action taken to improve the unimproved or the unpaved streets within the older section of town. It's widely acknowledged that the time has come for moving away from the dust, mud, and maintenance issues surrounding the unpaved streets and taking a different approach to improving them. As the mayor mentioned earlier this year, staff was directed by the commission to accomplish two things. First, we were to prioritize the unpaved streets for improvement using connectivity with other paved streets, existing drainage, existing base material, traffic levels, and other criteria. It was suggested at the time that this prioritization should span five years, more or less. Secondly, staff were tasked with finding a way to fund these improvements in a way as to be manageable. So tonight, I'm pleased to provide a prioritized listing of town streets that are being proposed for improvement. While some streets may not be included in this listing, those are the ones that didn't meet all the criteria noted earlier. I'm also pleased to announce that funding has been secured to implement several of the improvements listed. And it will not come from assessments on, you know, to your property or taxes on current residents. The funding, the funding identified will come from transportation impact, impact fees, which have been paid by the new homes being constructed. With that, I'll step aside and let Myra Monreal, a certified planner and professional engineer who you already know, take the podium and give a brief presentation. Myra?
I did tell someone I thought about bringing my stool, but I, I think the crowd is now down, died down and up. I know, but I'm going to mess it up and it'll hit me in the head.
The people at home want to hear you. The people at home want to hear you, Myra.
Okay, yes, we want. Oh, that would make me too tall. But hopefully everyone at home can hear us too. So, good evening. My name is Myra and I've had the pleasure of working with your community on traffic and roadway issues. I'm here with Tony Milton from Keith. He and I've worked together for nearly 25 years. Do the math because I turned 39. I'd like to say I'm your favorite traffic engineer and I think Tony will be your favorite pavement engineer after tonight. And you know, we will be here to talk about the proposed improvements to the unpaved streets and then the phasing. And I think the phasing is the most important part that we want to learn. So next slide. Tonight, we're gonna share a progress update on the street paving efforts. I really think it's important to go and talk about where we started, what's already been done, and then obviously the next steps. So we're gonna walk you through the criteria we use to make these recommendations. As always, we're here for your questions. We know there was some concern about the material placed on some streets like Edge Grove and those adjacent roadways. And I know that we're actively working to address that. I do want to thank residents who spoke about it, right? Because that's a kind of communication that is what kind of helps us as a town move things forward. And then we'll go to the next slide. But since we have some basically new to me pieces here, I wanted to kind of highlight the transportation timeline so that we can see how far we've. The original streets here in Oakland were unpaved. And then they bricked a few of them, then they paved some of them. This entire transfer transformation did not happen overnight. Took over a century. So as we talk about prioritizing next phase, considering it took 100 years to get us where we're at now. You know, we appreciate the patience and luckily, as Mike Parker discussed previously, there's funding. So it's not just a prioritization of unfunded objects, but we'll see how far we can go. So if you head over to the next slide. We did a windshield assessment to recommend some of best material for each unpaved road segment. And these are the three materials considered and where each is most appropriate. Of course, community input remains vital to the decision-making process. Some of these roads may serve one or two homes. Some of them may serve several. They may connect neighborhood. And those are the types of things that we looked at when we looked at prioritizing and phasing street segments. So most unpaved roads will start with a recycled asphalt. These are screened, machine laid and rolled. While it's not as smooth as new asphalt, it will greatly reduce or in some cases eliminate the dust. And I feel like it really reflects Oakland's unique character. So we use the term Oaklandify before, and I think this kind of gets us there. So the photo on the left was a test bed that was done on West Petrus, near the Arts and Heritage Center. And on the other side is, you know, an example of where this would material. All right, so again, the criteria that we used to transition the streets from unpaved to recycled and then eventually paving. Again, it took us 100 years to get to where we're at now, so we appreciate your patience as we get. So new developments, it may look a little similar, but if you look at the bottom, I'm kind of trying to give you an example of roads where that type of paving material would be appropriate. New developments are obviously required to build paved roads, but when we went through this prioritization, we looked at prioritizing the roads that connected neighborhoods, schools, other destinations, especially when it comes to public safety. In the historic core, where you may have lower traffic volumes, some of those phasing will be done in segments. I think the idea is to try and preserve, especially around town center. And then we'll get there, but this will allow us to kind of observe. So maps, because I'm a visual learner and that's how I can understand things a little better. Hopefully it helps you visualize things. This gives you an idea of where we started back in 2022. And you can kind of see if you look in the top right and then on the south side of Lake Apopka, where some of the new development is coming in and that's sort of what's driving the phasing as we go along. So again, you've done a lot of work, even just in the past few years. So this updated map highlights recent paving, some by new development and some by the town. Now, the roads here, Vic, Arrington, Mather and Edge Grove between Tub and Star, they were paved with, we were hoping to be recycled pavement, right? By the last contractor. And so the other thing that's kind of currently ongoing are some of the other segments that will connect to the other. And when I say connector, I'm talking about Oakland Avenue, I'm talking about Tub Street. You know, those are the major roads that kind of connect everything to all the other places. So next, we prioritize roads that connected existing neighborhoods to newly developed areas like Oakland Park and then Riley Farms, because all of those residents are going to be coming through existing neighborhoods. All right, so for a lot of your streets, you have adequate base, you have adequate drainage and you can go straight to recycled milling. And that's something that you've been able to kind of implement really quickly. Other streets will require additional engineering, especially for drainage. And that needs to be done before you can pave. So that's why you're gonna see some of these projects highlighted here because as with projects that need to be engineered, then designed, then built, those will take a little longer. So as with all infrastructure projects, funding will influence the timing. We've just kind of prioritized them and kind of given you an idea of what will come next. Mike has secured funding, which is to me the hardest part of a project. But here, if you have any questions, we'll be here at the end if you have any questions. I thank you for taking the time. And engineer, again, it doesn't confuse. But this is something that we think is important for the town and for your residents.
Any questions or comments from anybody on the table?
Waiting for Tony's pitch. Is he gonna come up? Tony gonna come up?
You got anything you want to add, Tony?
Okay. Thank you. Good.
Anyone else? I think we're heading in the right direction. I think we told the residents that we would take a really serious look at it. I know it's like Mike said, it's a long time coming. And we have charged them to find a solution and it's happening. So we have hit some little setbacks setbacks over here across the street with the with the contractor that's there. We are rectifying those issues that are there. Mike is working with the contractor to mitigate the issues that were called there, especially on Mather Smith, a section of an edge grove. But otherwise Vic, I think came out great, Arrington came out great, in my opinion. Portions of Mather Smith as you go around. Mike, do you want to address a little bit on the issues over here just?
Yes, certainly. So as you know, as some folks may may not know, the contractor that we hired to do roughly 3,300 linear feet of roadway switched material and you know, about halfway through the project and we've ended up with a substandard material that's put down. Now, I have written documentation from two engineers, actually three engineers that have came out and looked at the material and they have their registered transportation PEs. So they know what they're talking about. They've looked at the material, they've made an assessment and they have recommended that the contractor remove that material and put the good stuff down. Now with that said, the contractor, of course, is, you know, trying to get away with something and we're not gonna allow it. All he's been paid to this point is the mobilization. If you look at the, the work that was done, there's probably there's, I calculated it out to be $29,000 worth of work that is eligible for, that was done well. And we're just waiting on him to respond. I made, I made an appointment with him on yesterday. He didn't come in and I texted him today for an update and he still hasn't came in. And I spoke with Becky Vos, our attorney on, you know, potential steps. And you know, I think we're in a good place as far as we've got the, the evidence, so to speak, that it was improper material and we've got a method of remedying the issue so that, so that the residents will get the road that they, you know, that they were promised. So I think we're in a good, a good position. It's just gonna take some time because we have to look through legalities.
Thank you very much, Mike. Really, really appreciate it. A long time, 100 years. We're filing it around and big plus for all our residents, transportation impact fees.
Oh, yes. Great. Good. Thank you, Oakland Park residents.
Yeah. Anybody else? All right. Well, thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. Oh, John, go ahead. Come on up, John. What's your name?
John Hammerstein, 306 East Vic Avenue. Really do appreciate everybody's effort without a doubt. And I actually washed both vehicles, put them in the garage, left the door open and they're not dusty. They're clean, right? So appreciate that. Just a little concerned about more details of what you expect the contractor or somebody else to do. I know there is a majority of Arrington is fine. There's one little, probably two foot section of rock. You know? And then of course around Mather Smith and Edge Grove is from my perspective, just needs to be all redone. I mean, there's so much rock there. The other concern I had was even though it's asphalt and maybe we haven't been through hot enough season yet, there was some starts of potholes in all the rain we've had. And I don't know if there's a plan to have some of the good material available here that could be put in and filled in and address that as we go. So just more details about.
Yeah. So let me go back to one of your comments about Mather Smith. So about half Mather Smith is unsuitable. So you know, we've looked at that. It's, you know, half the road looks good, half the road looks bad. So we've got it down to the footage that he needs to remove and that's what I'm holding to. You know, and then to answer your second question, we do plan on having material here to do any repairs that are necessary.
Okay, what about Edge Grove?
Edge, Edge Grove is 100% bad. There's no doubt about it. Yeah, it is absolutely the wrong material.
So basically any place that you see a lot of aggregate is gonna be repaired?
Yes. Like I said, I met with the Florida Registered PEs and we drove the entire site, got out of the vehicles several times and looked at it. And they, they handled it. I mean, they, they, they know this stuff. And the majority of those two streets will be removed.
A little piece on.
And the radius, the radiuses were bad.
Little piece on Arrington?
Yes, I believe that was on the list.
At one point, it was suggested that the connection to the driveways, all foot connection.
So in answering that, the, the same contractor was charged with doing the driveways as well. That sense has been pulled. We, what we wanted to do, we wanted the contractor to complete the job. You know, there was a little section between the West Orange Trail and Mather Smith that needed completed. We wanted him to complete that so that we, so we had a complete picture, you know, to assess. Driveways will get surfaced, but it won't be by this contractor, will be after.
Again, I, my family deeply appreciates the improvement. I really do. I can tell you I've seen more people on the roads treating it like almost an extension of the trail. They're jogging, they're walking. For some strange reason, the golf carts slowed down. Everybody's, oh, they're gonna go faster, faster. Well, to, to this point, they're actually driving slower. Cars are driving a little slower. So I don't know if that lasts or not, but it seems like they're enjoying the roads more than what we used to. That's my point.
Good.
Deeply appreciate it. And yeah, hope that the rest of the town can look forward to what our improvement is. So that's great.
Thank you, John.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Sir. Yes, sir.
Sandy. Said in the in the road, the old asphalt is starting to crack. It's what is heavy truck. I was wondering if maybe Ray Harley tried to seal it for rainy seasons so that the rain doesn't go down and crack. Asphalt. So Mike or somebody was looking. You know, so that it just did not.
There was, there was an issue that Friday that happened with a truck coming out of Oakland Park that did scrape up the asphalt as it was pulling equipment out. So Mike did go down. He jumped right on it and they're aware of it. But Mike, you want to elaborate?
Yeah, so the, the contractor for Landever, who is the developer for Oakland Park, they were, they had a very, very large machine that they loaded out and brought it out on a low boy, if you know what that is. And they just, they just caught that hillside and tore the road into pieces in, in the parkway. Well, I'll tell you what I'll do. If, if it's still daylight after this meeting's over, I'll take one or two or three of these P E engineers down there and we'll look at it. They're the experts. Yeah, but Deborah from Landever today committed to, you know, to take care of the road down there where, where the truck had torn it up.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you.
The worst thing that could happen. The worst thing that could happen is we'll just have recycled millings there. I'll turn it, you know, I'll turn it to recycled millings, and we'll save a lot of money there. If we leave it alone long enough, I'll turn it to recycled asphalt.
Good evening. I'm Dave Helsel. I live at the, on Twenty-one North Daniels, at the corner of Daniels and West Hension. So thank you for the presentation. We've we've needed it pretty badly. I do have a question on your slide twelve. Yeah, you stopped Daniels at West Hension, and there's like a gap there. And I guess that's because there's going to be a design build.
Right, yeah. On on the map, it's kind of hard to show that. But the design build, the design is already underway. So that is going to take place this fiscal year, basically, right there from Oakland Avenue up to about Hension. And then, I think, I don't have the presentation in front of me, but I think it's ranked pretty high on the on the priority list for the.
Number one. Yeah, it does. It's number one for the the design build. But, yeah, it's just strange because you're you're going to do the Millings all the way on North Daniels. But you have that gap between Oakland Avenue and West Hension, which gets obviously all the offload from Oakland Avenue.
That's, so that's the design build.
That'll get Millings, but it has to be designed build first.
No, it'll, the majority of that is is traditional pavement, just like the other turnouts that we have installed on all the other streets. It turned off Oakland Avenue and Tub Street.
So you're going to pave from Oakland to West Hension?
Thirty-five feet back from Oakland, and then the remainder will be Millings.
Millings, okay. So the timeline for that?
For the design build? It's in design right now. You may see survey stakes out there. It's been surveyed, and it's it's in the works right now. It is a project for this fiscal year.
Okay. Once that's done, then it will be also get the Millings.
Yes.
Is that right?
Okay.
I just want to make sure I understood the chart. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Okay, guys. Yes, sir.
I'm Gary Merrick, one oh two North Daniels, at the catty corner from Dave. I'm very excited about this. I'll be happy if this is going to happen on Daniels. About six weeks ago, I guess it was, I requested a study to be done for a four-way stop to be put at Hension and Daniels. I was wondering if anything has happened with that because I'm hoping, like John said, when the road is done, people will slow down. Because right now, they're pretty fast. Has anything been done about that four-way stop?
Yeah. Chief, you have any any information, or you want to save that for public comment?
We spoke about it, Mike and I did. And as far as safety concerns go, traffic, there are zero documented crashes. We we can't support a four-way stop there. And I spoke, I deferred to public work. If Mike can think of another reason why, but we can't just put it up. And I spoke with Mr. Merrick on the phone. We, from from my standpoint, we cannot just say a four-way stop because somebody wants it. There has to be an articulated reason why. We can't bring that to the table.
Is that because you can't enforce it in case something happens, or?
No, we certainly could enforce it. We just can't justify it. We, to justify a four-way stop, there needs to be some type of articulate reason, such as safe, public safety being the first one. If we could document that there's been ten crashes there this year or something like that due to speed, speed-related crashes, of course, that's that's something we can look at. But we have zero traffic, and just speeding complaints is not enough to say we need a four-way stop here. What we've done is we've asked the officers to monitor it. I know that the other day, they monitored it for two hours. There were sixteen cars that traveled there, and none of them were above the speed limit. I know that's not what you want to hear, but that's that's what happened. And that was only one day. That's just a sample of one day. But I can't even justify the volume of traffic. Sixteen cars in two hours is not.
There's the answer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
John's daughter. I'm Rob, I'm Robin Waters, and I live on one oh six Mather Smith. And I just would like to say on behalf of my husband and I and my son, all three drivers, we would like to say thank you very much for the paved roads or the milling roads and all the efforts that Mike has gone to to keep the ball rolling and being on top of it. And if we stop him in the middle of the street, he answers our questions. And I would just like to say thank you very much.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thanks for the feedback.
Robin, the only thing that I have a question on is I don't understand how you can tell me that your young son is already driving.
He's twenty-nine.
No, he's not. I don't want to hear it. He's still that little boy.
Scott Ren, three oh five Edge Grove. A lot of the sentiments I do share. I appreciate the work that's being done in the town. A lot of things that I've noticed over the course of the months, years that I've started to attend town meetings, still give me pause. I'm at that point. Don't want to be the downer. Everybody's supporting these things. Y'all want to take a look at what we got on Edge Grove? I have samples over there in those two bins of rocks and all of the recycled road debris that ended up, glass, metal, parquet flooring, PVC pipe, all the junk that's usually associated with building roads up. That's what this contractor ended up putting down on the road. I talked to Mike. He said they were going to get the contractor to redo it. You guys probably all got my email last Saturday or so. I appreciate those who responded to me. The intersection of Vic and Tub Street contractor, poor choice of contractor, in my opinion. You guys didn't know his his work ethic is pretty poor. Excuse me. The road doesn't even meet the apron coming off of Tub Street at that point. So one of the pictures that I sent in, it's short about a foot on one side, and the right side of the intersection, which was short almost two and a half feet, their dump truck was parked there the day they were putting milling down. So they just went around it with their paving equipment, and he never came back to fix it. So from the standpoint of making our roads look nice, that'd be a great place for them also to complete. I don't share the sentiment that this is going to be a good material. I want to continue to go on record that I think it's a mistake. Edge Grove and Vic are, if we pay this contractor, we're over right around two dollars a square foot. We're pretty close to paving. It would have lasted twenty years guaranteed with minimal maintenance. And I know in the books and on the presentation from May eleventh that this material said that it is no dust. Well, we were having conversations out on Vic, near Vic Street, after the first bit of paving was going down, cars going by, and it's black dust instead of white dust. Now, it hadn't rained on it. It hadn't settled down, but it had been compacted and laid. So as far as dust, I'm not going to say that this is a good material. We don't know. It's a different type of dust, as far as I'm. But we're going to have to wait for some sunny days and let it all dry out and see what happens. Some of the stuff that's near Arrington is so fine and powdery, I see no way that that's going to stay down on the roads when it's dusty and the vehicles are hitting it. As as John said, there's potholes forming already because water's sitting in it. It's not grated or crowned to let the water run off. It's just going to create a wet area. Cars are going to tear it up. And now it continues to be maintenance for our town and money for our town. Whereas traditional paving is done, we have twenty to thirty years out of it. So I'm, I wish the town would go into the cost that it takes to maintain our road over the period of twenty years. Take that amount of money, and let's see whether or not this is a good material put down. Because we don't know how it's going to hold up. Still waiting on that. We didn't even get a good road out of the first one, and it couldn't happen to a better road. So I, you know, you guys have heard of me about the roads. I started this whole thing about a year and a half, two years ago, when the dust just became, you know, too much for us to take. And, you know, we're kind of here to just going forward. All I can say at that point.
Scott. Okay. Thank you, Scott. I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Mike, is two dollars a square foot for the Millings versus how much a square foot for the asphalt? Just want to make sure it's factual.
I can't answer that right now. I'd have to look it up. Yeah, I have to go back to the office.
All right. I just want to see versus the asphalt. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you for the answer, Scott.
Anyone else? All right. Moving on then. And Mike, thank you. Good job out there. Thank you very much.
I think we're looking for a motion.
Oh, okay, so, all right. Would anyone like to make a motion to accept Myra's presentation?
I'll make the motion to accept the improvements to the unpaid street plan.
A second?
I'll second it.
One favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right. Great. So moving on next is a cool project that is taken, has taken, that has taken place in the town over the last year, I think, right, Mike?
Yeah, we started like September of last year.
This is a cool UCF project. It's a capstone project for some, a group of guys, ladies, for our tree canopy plants.
Okay. So in September twenty twenty-four, the town was approached by Michael Gilbrook, an instructor at the University of Central Florida, asking if we would be interested in participating in a capstone experience for environmental studies. So I'd never heard of that, so it sounded interesting. These projects can involve almost any kind of resiliency, sustainability, social service, environmental or planning effort, and some even contain a GIS component. So in January twenty twenty-five, the Town of Oakland Tree Canopy Improvement Project began to take shape. The student group that was responsible consisted of Lauren Metke, Lindsay Siegler, Danny Slort, Alana Foot, Casey Dykman, and Rebecca Bryant. UCF grads, they're really super people, and they really did a good job. The areas targeted by this effort were Oakland Avenue from Winter Garden to the Lake County line, so both sides of the street, Tub Street from State Road fifty to Lake Apopka, both sides of the street, and the West Orange Trail Corridor from Winter Garden to Lake County. Now, you know, we don't operate the trail. We don't own the land that the trail's on, with the exception of a couple of lots here downtown. But, you know, we have some ancillary areas that we could plant trees, and we'll work closely with Orange County government in in getting that arrangement made. So the objectives of the project were to collect data on tree species, the general health of existing trees. They also identified utilities or other features that were within the identified gaps in the canopy. So that's what they were looking for, you know, gaps in the tree canopy. And then anything that would be in the way to, you know, to to keep us from planting. And then ultimately to create maps and make recommendations for the new plantings. The project was completed in April. Unfortunately, we couldn't get it scheduled for commission fast enough. There was just not enough time from the time they completed the project. So the students have now graduated. They've, you know, gone back to their homes or for wins or wherever. Otherwise, they would be here tonight. In the near future, staff will assess the inventory and recommendations made and program our operating budgets accordingly. So we we envision it, you know, being several years. So with that, I'll kind of go through this this presentation that the that the kids or the students made. And I haven't changed anything in here. It's just like they made it. Okay, so site selection criteria, you can see what 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 that criteria was. It must be in an area considered to be a tree canopy gap, must not be within five feet of any utilities, and must not be within twenty feet of an existing tree. This, let's see, we've got a lot of maps here. So this shows the canopy coverage and any canopy gaps. So you can see it goes all the way from the Lake County line across Oakland Avenue out by State State Road fifty, goes all the way down over the Turnpike, and then the next slide will take it to downtown. So there's Nature Preserve, there's Downtown Oakland, and then the next slide takes us to Winter Garden. I think we, I think we skipped one. But anyway, they identified the tree species that were out there. And as you can see, there's a lot of them. And it, once again, it goes all the way from Lake County line to Winter Garden, both the West Orange Trail and Oakland Avenue, and then Tub Street from State Road fifty to the lake. Next slide. This shows the, like I said, some programs had a GIS component, so they wrapped that in there. So they GISed, or they GPSed for GIS entry, all of the utilities that they observed along the way. Next slide. There's the old town. It's kind of busy. A lot of utilities. And then, next slide. And then here is their proposal for tree plantings. It's really hard to see, but if if you zoom in on it, which, you know, I can do, we can see where they've recommended tree plantings. Now, you'll notice out there on the west, on the west end, they they really recommended a lot on the West Orange Trail. So, you know, we'll be working with Orange County on that. And there we are, the, that's trailside area there in the Turnpike. A lot of, a lot, they're recommending a lot of trees. A lot. Next slide. That's old, that's downtown area. And then, next slide. And that takes us to Winter Garden, and and that must be an old map. There's no houses in Oakland Park. So. Next slide. And let's see, where is that? That is the Charter School, and, yeah, that's recommended tree plantings along Oakland Avenue from roughly Tub Street down to the school, and then Tub Street up south of the town center. Okay, so I don't know where they got their estimated costs from, but it's a little bit low. So like I said earlier, we're going to assess that. That is basically just the the flat, you know, cost of a tree. It does not include irrigation or anything, so, you know, we'll be, we'll be looking at that. But, hey, they did a great job, and, you know, it really, it it goes, it it goes hand in hand with the town's existing policy of, you know, taking care of whatever trees we can. So I think they've done a good job. Next slide. Here's their recommendations. Plant new trees per the proposed plan. Well, we'll, we'll, we'll see how that goes. But we're going to definitely plan on doing a lot of them and then seek guidance from the town arborist to identify and remove any trees that are in poor condition. We do have a town arborist, not on staff. She's contracted. And I think she's an alma mater of Rollins, so I'm not going to ask her to do it for free because these were UCF students. So, anyway, any any questions, I'll try to answer.
Questions? Just got a comment. I wish the students were here first to thank them. This is great, a great piece of addition to our town, just for the future, to have placement when the money does come around or however we get creative, like we always do. You help us a lot, right? To bring those trees and fill in those gaps and start doing the same thing we do with the streets, right? Where where will be the first area to start filling up the gaps? Because this is what we, you know, Tree City USA, our our town. So this is what we stand by, the name, you know, Oakland. So I think this is great. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I think this is saying, I agree. This is great information. We know trees have been a big subject with some of the losses we've had with the new development. So I think this is a great counterbalance to bring some of those trees back that we may have lost. Thanks for having them do that.
What is the total amount of trees?
Oh, is it? Five thousand?
It's on here somewhere. Let's see. It's a lot.
Three hundred seventeen. So we max out on how many residents, nine thousand, ten thousand? So we got about three thousand residents to go, right? So as far as units, each developer that comes, for each unit, you owe me a tree. We'll fill it up.
Yeah, whatever works.
Man, good?
Whatever works, yeah.
You got two hundred units, you owe me two hundred trees, and I'll pick the fifteen-gallon one.
Yeah, well, let let us, let us assess the the viability of planting them where that sits. So let us do that first.
Right. Thank you, Mike.
Uh-huh, you're welcome.
This is all just recommendations.
Yeah, there's not, yeah, just just FYI. Yeah, there's not, yeah, just, just that FYI, right? This is just an FYI, right? This isn't any type of...
Um, no, just, uh, accept the, uh, what's our recommendation on the, uh, thing? It's, I think, I think I said accept or embrace or something. You don't have to.
Last page, yeah. Okay, uh, so would anybody like to make a recommendation or accept the recommendations?
I'll make the motion to accept the, uh, UCF's recommendation for our tree planting.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thanks, Mike. Thanks, Mike.
Okay, can we just have a reminder that none of this is being recorded when it's in that forum?
When you speak, Tom, they're, they're not, nobody can hear you. Stand up and shout next time. All right, so, uh, hey, we reached that time in the meeting where it's the public forum. So this is where we open it up to anybody in the audience, uh, that would like to speak about anything. Wait till I introduce you. Uh, would like to speak about anything that's not on the agenda. Oh, it looks like we have a taker. Yeah. Don't forget, don't forget to say your name and address. Okay, I'm ready.
There, you got Kevin back there working.
My name is Jill Cox. I live on, uh, three oh one Walker Street. Um, I like to talk, but I don't like this thing. Um, we've lived here ten years and I love cemeteries. I don't want to be buried in one, but I love them. And there's one at the end of my street. I've been to all the cemeteries and walked them and read the headstones. And there's some in Walker, they're masterpieces. And, um, I went to one of the, meet your mayor, talked to the mayor. And I said, hey, that cemetery on Walker Street, something's going on. You know, all these roads, a lot of these roads, that's where those people are. Dillard, Tilden, Petrus, Walker. Um, there are eight, I counted, that have fallen over and broken. Um, so mayor said, hey Jill, why don't you volunteer to look into that? And the last time I got volunteered was that golf cart parade thing. And I think it did a pretty good job. But, um, so I did. I, I took pictures. I started. Um, you can see the pictures. Um, it's kind of devastating when you look at some of them. But then I got, um, the name of who's in charge of this from the previous town manager. And I called the first name and he said, no, I'm not on that. And I called the second name, Mark Griffith. And then you'll see my conversation. I left the voicemail and he texted me back. And he wanted pictures. I sent him pictures. And then before the last text from him, I talked to, um, the caretaker of Woodlawn. And he sat down with me and we walked the cemetery and I showed him the pictures. And he was distraught over this cemetery. And the algae, the lichen, the mildew, the mold. He said, if we don't stop that, there'll be no names on any of those. And so he volunteered to help bring his equipment and fix those broken, um, ones that have fallen over. He knows how to do that. He takes care of two other cemeteries that have headstones. He said, Jill, I'll come and I'll help you. I'll show you how to clean them without chemicals. Um, so I was excited. And then the last text I got from Mark Griffith said, our board appreciates your concern and offered to clean the headstones, but after further discussion, we all agree that the plots and the headstones are private property and we can't allow you to proceed. So the next step was the head of this committee that takes care of that, um, is registered as Oakland Cemetery Association. And, um, my husband knows everybody. I don't know everybody. He does. Um, he actually knows the president of this. They're, you know, done business together. And he sent an email and I quoted that. And that was on March, um, twenty-seventh. And that's the last thing that I've done. I haven't heard a word. And so I really feel like I'm at a roadblock. What can we do? Is there anything the town can do? Because this Greg Bates that is over Woodlawn said, if you don't do something, you're going to have a cemetery that has no names on all of those beautiful. And there's some in there that are, ones carved to look like a tree. It's beautiful. And that's what I did, mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. It, so, um, when Jill had approached me about it, we talked about it and, and, and found out, we know that it's a, it's a private, privately owned cemetery. So, um, the unfortunate part is it being privately owned, um, there's not much you can do. So it'd be no different if I went to Jill's house and told her to mow her yard or paint her house or anything like that. It's her property. Um, you know, she is correct. If you, if you've, if you've been in the cemetery and you've walked through the cemetery, um, and, and, and let me back up a little bit. Um, there's, there's three cemeteries in town. Um, two of those are privately owned cemeteries and the historic, like cemetery is town owned. So, um, that, that's the only one that the town, uh, has and maintains. And that one's a very critical cemetery. Uh, because of the, uh, concerns about its condition, we have to be very careful. But, uh, the one on Highway fifty and the one that she's talking about on Walker are both privately owned. Um, there are a lot of names that are, that are in there. So, um, that, that matter to the town. So, uh, for me, uh, uh, on a personal level, uh, preserving that history and those names are critical. I mean, if you've ever been to an old Civil War museum, uh, cemetery or, or anything like that, you know, it's kind of cool to walk through there and look at that. Um, unfortunately for us, there is no power, uh, on, um, our side to, to have them. Now, um, I will say that there are, uh, state agencies that regulate cemeteries. Uh, there are, uh, and it's the, um, Chief Financial Officer of the State of Florida. And they are, each cemetery has to have an inspection done once a year. And those inspections, uh, get scheduled by a, uh, state officer who comes out and, um, does inspections. Hey, you ask me, how do I know that? Well, in my previous profession, I ran a cemetery, uh, as part of my real estate portfolio that we managed and developed. So I, I'm well aware of what they do and, and, and they scrutinize it. And if something's not really taken care of, um, you know, they write you up. So, um, I, I, I asked Jill though. She wanted to go down that path and see. Um, I think from a town standpoint, maybe what we can do sitting on the table is maybe craft a letter to the owners of the cemetery and each of us sign it and asking them, hey, guys, would you please see if there's anything we're willing to put the sweat equity in and, and the effort? Uh, you know, is it possible for us to try to do something there? So if everybody would like to participate in that, yeah?
I agree with that statement, by the way.
I just came over to me as the people that are buried there, their families have to take care of it. And so where are these families? And, and there's that one picture with the tree. So that family has to come and take the tree off of their grave? I mean, that's kind of crazy, you know? So it's, it's, I think there's a lot of headstones in there that don't have family anymore.
Right.
The one with the tree, that spear, that spear part person, you know, family. So I think that's kind of, we should present to them too, that there are probably lots of people that are in there that don't have family here anymore.
Correct. And that's, and that's what you kind of will find is a lot of these, as old as they are, especially the older ones. Uh, and, and again, if you haven't walked through, I, I would encourage you to do that. It's just kind of, it's something neat. Um, and some of the stonework that they've done in there is kind of cool. But that, that's the issue is that the families aren't around to take care of it or advocate for, uh, for it. But a- as I mentioned, I, I, if, if we're all in agreement, I think we can get something really quick and then at least we gave it a shot. And we tried. The worst they'll do is say, no, no thanks. Uh, you know. Aye. Got it. Got it. Chilson? Oh, yeah.
Uh, Kevin, ha- have you got a response from Nick Asma since that email you sent in March twenty-seven?
Yeah, we can't have conversations where people are not on the record. People are watching for him.
Thank you.
Kevin talks three laps.
Surprisingly not. Sorry.
Gosh.
So, man, I got a question. What you said was, so if, because I know you have a problem with that in, um, the town, the cemetery that the town, like, because I went through there and n- none of the families are around and none of the families are around. So to say what you said, so if the, none of the families are around, that sounds like dereliction of that, that person that privacy owned it. If none of the families are around, but they're saying they're comfortable with just letting the grave deteriorate. Because like I said, that graveyard up there has been malnourished or whatever and roots have grown over it. So we're saying that we can't even as, reach out to the families if they have families. If they don't have families, they, the ground, who, who, who's the caregiver over there?
Sure. So, so, so a good point. So if, if you look, I, I mean, some of these families, you see names like Roper on there. Do you, do you contact, uh, somebody in the Roper family to ask, hey, do you have any issue with somebody taking care of this? Uh, um, Mather Smith, um, I think her grandson wrote a book. Uh, so we know he's around. Would he have an issue with, uh, with that? And, and it's just tracking those, those people down. Um, you know, there are groups that do go out to cemeteries. I know for a fact that will go out and clean headstones if the cemetery allows them to do so. And, uh, those families are, are, are happy to, to, the people that are, that do go out there, they're happy to have them, uh, go that and take care of those. What, what we don't want to do is in a hundred years, it's overgrown and it's not taken care of. And then we get, and we get the same issue that we have over here.
Talking about the graveyard that's on Dirt Road, right?
Yeah, correct, on the corner.
Of course, when I was a child. That's like I said, I just feel sorry. Like she said, I feel sorry because if we're saying that we want to keep the town history and all the, all the streets that I think are named after somebody in this town, but we want to keep the town history, I think it's a dereliction of whoever duty that they're sitting there and saying, I don't even want you to touch the people that, that don't have family graveyard. I can see if the people that's around and they want to keep, you know, the people, whatever privacy of the people who's around. Like I said, in the black, that black graveyard cemetery, there's nobody around. So for somebody to say, sounds like they're dictating how we do, how we do preserve our history. And I think that's wrong. So if we can do something, something, but we need to reach out some because pretty soon, like I said, I, I, I'm witnessing that that stuff will fade away and graveyards will not have any names on it.
Right, right.
Mr. Bacon, that's great, uh, uh, split of how the letter could be sent and crafted to the point of, at minimum, at Mr. Asma, could you let us take care of the tombstones that a hundred, they're a hundred years old and nobody's claiming them at minimum? Now, the ones who own their, own and still are existing, if they don't want to step up, we're like, our mayor said, we're not going to go into your yard to clean your, your, your car, right? So I'm one of the owners that owns, you know, a plot there, Ramos, and I take care of it. I'm still around. Hopefully a hundred years from now, my grand, grandkids, you guys can hold them accountable for the record. Pull this up.
Or they keep it separate from the town.
So, so being a, being a private entity, they have a list of, of who's in there and where they're at and stuff. And that's, no, we would not. No, we'd not. And, and I believe that the cemetery was, wasn't set up as a town cemetery. From the research I, I looked at, it was all set up as a privately ran. And when you look at the old plat of that cemetery, it has some of the, uh, peoples whose names are on the streets, uh, started that cemetery. So, uh, it's kind of, kind of interesting. But, um, I, I think going that route and getting a, uh, kind of a, a letter drafting, just asking on the town's behalf, can you please help us out on this, uh, is a start on that. And like I said, um, you can't force them to do it, but you can, I think we can maybe ask a, uh, a man or that will, maybe they'll think about it, you know, and do something. So Jill, we'll, we'll get something together and then, um, we'll put it in everybody's box for you to take a look at, if you're okay with it. Okay, anyone else? I'm sorry.
Maybe Kevin, maybe you can, uh, reach back out with a, hey, we haven't heard anything. Maybe you kind of accidentally dropped it or something that...
Yeah, we're not lawyers. So it's humble people that can ask. Uh, anyone else? Have any other things to talk about? It's not only just, yes, Scott?
Three oh five, I'm forgetting to ask this question when I've been at meetings. The former town manager was moving forward or trying to get ClearGov, I think was the name of it. It was a software program or website that was going to show and allow people to come into the town. Are we planning on continuing moving forward?
Gabby?
Yes, we are planning on moving forward. Um, with the lack of staff that I had in, uh, the finance department, it was very hard for me to do that with the turnover that we've been having in the departments because I need every department director to go in. Um, now that we're a little bit more fulfilled, um, this fiscal year, I'm going to try and have it active on the website. So hopefully by October or November, it'll start showing some data. Um, just bear with me, please. I only have two people, so. It's a, yes, but we did, um, we moved forward. We've implement, uh, imported as much data as we can. I think there's about four fiscal years in there. Um, I just have to get some data from the departments and then it'll be active. And then you'll be able to see it all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and, um, we'll take it to our town manager.
All right. I don't want to take up too much time. We've talked a lot about a lot of different things. Um, I do want to say we will have a new utility billing supervisor starting this month. So I know Gabby's happy about that. Ty's been doing double duty. Um, seems to be a theme around here, doing double duty, but, um, we should have somebody starting in May. And then hopefully we'll, we'll get moving forward on that. Um, and we will also have a utility tech, um, starting for public work. So we're excited. That position's been open for over a year. Um, so we're, we're very thankful that we've had some good applicants, that we can fill some of these positions and get some help on board. Um, Gabby will talk a little bit about where we're at with the budget and audit. Um, so I'll leave it at that.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, so moving on to other staff. Um, Gabby, you got anything else you want to add?
Um, well, as Elise mentioned, um, the auditors have, um, been working on the audit for almost a month now. It's been a very torturous month. Um, but they will be finishing up, I believe, this week. And the financial statements will be drawn and then a presentation will be done to the commission, hopefully in June. Um, because the audit is technically du- uh, due on June thirtieth, so they need to, you know, put a little pep in their step. Um, and then budget has started, so we have completed the utility fund. Um, it's in preliminary numbers right now. Water fund, I'm sorry, general fund is being worked on right now. Um, we're going to be meeting with all the department directors to get their final numbers. And then we'll be meeting with each of the commissioners to get their final input as well. Um, just to see what they're wanting for their budget and overall what the town's looking like. Um, so hopefully we'll have a budget workshop sometime in June so that everybody can see where we're at with our starting numbers. And the residents can chime in and, you know, ask any questions that they, they have. So that's where we're at right now.
Thanks. Lynn, something exciting's happening this weekend.
Good evening. Um, yes, so we have a big weekend coming up. Um, Saturday, we're having our second annual car stroll. Um, if you were at the car show last year, it was very successful. It's presented by Shannon Till State Farm. And, um, we're looking forward to that. It's from ten to noon. And then at the exact same time, we have our new exhibit opening, um, called Life in the Pet Lane. in the Pet Lane. And I've been climbing ladders and, and hanging art all day yesterday and today, and it's looking really cool. So we like to tie our exhibits in with an event because it gets more of our residents and our guests in the door of the center. So we're really excited. And if you're free, we would love for you to come by between 10 and 12 on Saturday.
Chief, deputy chief, anything?
We took delivery of both of the Clermont cars that were donated to us. They are, they're striped up. They, you know, decal with the Oakland decal, so they're ready and in service, which is great. And then.
I'm sorry, does everybody know that story, what happened there? Okay.
It's a great story.
Story, great story.
Unfortunately, Pete Broadway was good enough to help us out on his way out. He knew he was leaving, but he still stepped up and helped us when we needed it. So that was great. And those cars are in service, like I said, so they're, they're here. Along with cars, I think Elise has a quick video of another one of our cars that will be featured in the car stroll this week. So that car, we didn't have in our budget to wrap that car, but we wanted to put a creative wrap on the SRO car. So for those of you who don't know, the mayor and Commissioner Ramos were kind enough to step up from their businesses and donate that wrap. So we really appreciate it and it looks fantastic. They did a great job. The company that did the wrap also did the video for us. Really good. And then the only other thing I have, I know you did a proclamation for it last month, but the time is now upon us. This is National Police Week to remember all the fallen officers. And right now, as we speak, there's about 60,000 police officers from around the country that are on the national lawn, or the national mall, the lawn of the national mall in Washington, participating in a candlelight vigil. It's a very sombering, very good event to remember the 24,000 officers that are fallen, that are on the wall up in Washington. That's going on right now. And then two days from now will be National Peace Officer Memorial Day, which is one of two days during the calendar year that the flag flies at half staff without a presidential order. A very, very significant day to remember those who, who died in the line of duty. Other than that, that's all I got.
Sure. Nothing else? Nothing about promotions? No, no, okay. All right. Okay, good, good. All right. Mike, anything from you? You've said a lot today.
Nope. Nothing. Nothing. Lot, lot, lot of great things happening. Just keep your eyes open and you'll see them.
Awesome. All right. Commissioner Keller, you want to start us off?
I was just gonna take a minute to say that one of the amazing things about living in a town, especially a small town like Oakland, is that, you know, you're, the commission, we are your neighbors. The towns don't all live in town, but they spend a lot of hours working very hard here. And that we are all accessible. You don't have to wait for commission meetings. If there's something that you have a concern about, you can call Town Hall, you can get our emails, you can go through the website. There's a flyer every commission meeting for our Facebook pages, you know, for the town, for ONP, the police department, for the Arts and Heritage Center. If you want to know what's going on and what's being addressed, you know, follow those pages. You know, I think most of us would agree social media is a love and hate thing, but one of my frustrations is when I see people that post incorrect information or things out on social media that they clearly don't have the full picture. If there's something you have a question about, you can call Town Hall, you can go on the website, you can reach out to us and directly, and, you know, we'll obviously respond as we can. But I just would love to see more of our folks, you know, as we, as you share things with your fellow neighbors and things like that, just remind them that all of the information is available through our town social media pages and you can reach out to any of them.
Well said. Commissioner Bone?
Just real brief, information on Mount Zion AMB. I met with the pastor, there's a new pastor, she's been there, I think, just less than a year. So I'd met with her, you know, just to talk to her, you know, kind of walk into the town. And so she has some ideas of how she wants to collaborate with the town. Fast forward to April 30th, of course, you know, the AMB church has a bishop of a structure, the local bishop for this area was visiting the churches. And I met with him, he was at the church on April 30th. So it just was, you know, like a nice meeting greet. So just to kind of fast forward, AC, I own AC Adrian Cowans as a member here. He's putting together a basketball event this summer. So just quick, just, you know, just to give us a heads up. We did this years ago. Years ago, we had a big basketball camp. We even had some Boston Celtics retirees that came out and we did a big clinic out to the park on West, West Hall Park. So with that being said, you know, the bishop is excited, the pastor is excited, and then Adrian, as I mentioned, is putting this together. He did it years ago and he's trying to get and bring it back again. So we just, just heads up, we're going to have some notes about or how that's going to be produced sometime this summer in July.
Right. AC Cowans, huh?
Yeah. No, no, what I'm talking, I'm talking about Adrian.
Oh, hey, oh.
I call, I call him AC.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I call him AC. I'm talking about, I'm talking about our AC, our Adrian Cowans. Yeah.
Players are we bringing?
Oh, no, I'm saying before we have, I don't know if we're going to bring any players like last time, but I'm just saying, giving you the story, before we did have some higher Boston Celtics.
Guys.
Came out with the clinic. So just, you know, just bring you a little bit of history on what we did before, but just fast forward to now, you know, church and with the bishop being there, Adrian, our Adrian Cowans is putting.
Got it. Yeah, understood.
I apologize.
No, no, no.
Got to rush it all together and bring all the, I really want us to know this wasn't the first time he's done it. Then the town was a big.
Sure. Sure. Yeah. All right. Commissioner Ramos?
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you.
Well, as Commissioner Chris had mentioned before, you know, we're approachable. You guys can reach us through, either through in-person, phone, email, or social media. And, and we pay attention and we follow through. And we have a great staff and team who helps us out. We don't do this alone. And recently, there were some Facebook posts on traffic coming from Highway 27 for Clermont through here to Florida Turnpike. And it was on a post that everybody was part of. I mean, there was dozens and dozens of remarks on a lady who owns a pottery store in class over there in Clermont, who said it used to take her X amount of time to get to Orlando once a week to get her material. And now, you know, takes whatever, two hours, three hour trip back and forth. And they mentioned the traffic on Colonial, which, as you guys are aware, I sit in the Metro Plan Orlando Municipal Advisory Committee representing the town of Oakland, or this area of West Orange. And I brought it up recently to the representative, John Scarf of the FDOT, to give me future plans of what they expect to do here on the corridor of Colonial. And he just recently emailed me last night, was saying, good afternoon, Commissioner Ramos. After speaking with you on the MAC last Thursday, I spoke with the PIO team in our project development administration, there is a limited information because of the recent study, but I was informed on the following. We have just started the study and are working on doing a traffic analysis from State Road 50 from US 27 to Florida's Turnpike. Once we have the results on the traffic analysis, we will evaluate the next steps for our study. Over time, come, more information will become available. As that information becomes available, I will be happy to provide updates. You can always feel free to reach out regarding latest updates from your area. Different from Florida Turnpike, which I talked to Mr. Si C. Fine, the Turnpike representative, because they also have already in place the plans they're going to have on our exit, because it's going to get rearranged, our exit on the Turnpike on Colonial. And that could be also found in the MAC documentations or the website. But I will be bringing that, these copies and the Turnpike expansion, which is what they picked out years back, couple of, but they're really slow over there, very slow. I've been telling them for 10 years about doing this or that. And they have five-year plans for expanding the road. And by the time they get there, they already need two more roads or two more lanes. So that, I will be posting that on the, on the Facebook too, for everybody to go in there and see. I didn't want to respond to that Facebook till I got information from these two gentlemen. I'll put what they already have planned for the Turnpike. And as they develop and they bring more information for FDOT for Colonial, I'll start posting that so everybody's aware of where we're headed towards, so we can alleviate some of that traffic there. And Memorial Day service at the Oakland Cemetery will be at 9:00 AM Monday, May 26, which I attended last year. And this time, I believe it's the gentleman, the same group who's coming down to help us, who came here, spoke last meeting. And either, I don't know who else is going to be part of this commission board. I will be there. If you'd like Mayor to be one of the ones who does the speech I did last year, we can take turns. I'm perfectly fine with it. But if, I will at least be there. And I wanted to get assistance early now, instead of catching you guys off guard. You guys did a great job, great audible. But what lagged the time, because it could get hot and it could be there for hours, is the fact that we had to get on 50, bring everybody to the African American cemetery. And if we can figure out a way ahead of time to maneuver the people from one cemetery to the other one, either on Oakland or behind the trail on the Oakland Cemetery, I've offered my golf cart. I got a couple of them. Whoever wants to offer golf carts, if, whatever you guys say is easier to maneuver, we're expecting at least two or three times more people this time around.
Good. All right.
The only thing I got, that'll be a busy week. I'd say morning, flyaway, fifth graders, they're leaving school, all sorts of vehicles. And they kind of go to parking lots and stand outside the turnpike. Pretty cool event. So it's nine o'clock Wednesday, 28. You know, last year, we had someone take in, had boats on trailers and the kids. Hope chief's not looking. But it is very interesting. The kids are just having a great time.
All right. I just got a few things here. I would like to, real quick, maybe, maybe, Lynn, I wanted, you know, we have all this traffic now with the road that's blocked at 545 in Oakland. It's not, it's not Oakland that's doing it. It's, it's Winter Garden. So, but there's a lot of amount, there's a large amount of traffic that's coming down Tub Street and hitting this intersection of Tub and Oakland Avenue. I know that we have events that are coming up and we promote events. And I know we had the banners that we hang up at the intersection right there. So I was thinking, I didn't know if we had any banners or any way to hang banners on the west side of town by the roundabout. So there, you know, there's a lot of people that are coming that way. Is there stuff down there? Sorry.
Yeah, we, we had, we had a site that we used to use right there, kind of, kind of near the Circle K.
Yeah.
But now that the roundabout's complete, it's time to, yeah, we can, we can look into that.
Yeah. So I'm thinking, you know, if we're having the car show, for example, we're going to promote the car, or whatever we're going to promote, you know, we have it here at this intersection. And then also, you know, we have a large majority of residents, half the town lives down on the west end, and they go through the roundabout. So it'd be good to maybe put something down there.
Yeah. Yeah. The other, just for the record, the other sites that we had was one over in John's, or John's Landing. We had one down at the Winter Garden jurisdictional line and one out here on the West Orange Trail. So we've got several of them, but that's, that's a good one to look into. We'll, we'll see if we can find a prominent.
Aren't they in the ground? Aren't those pieces are still in the ground?
Yeah, they're still there.
Put the poles in.
Uh huh.
Also, I had the, was invited, and I think most of the town, was invited to attend a, it was a 20-year anniversary of a business that's in town, that's Rachel's Collision. And I went to their cookout barbecue celebration last, last Friday, well attended. And it's good to see a business that's been in town for 20 years. So congratulations to Kathy and Gary Merrick, who, who own Rachel's Collision, their daughter Rachel. So I know, I went, I'm not sure, I think chief, maybe your officers went, because we do some business with them as well, just like everybody around here. So not, you know, it's not a commercial or anything, but it's, it's pretty awesome to have somebody that's been in business for 20 years in our, in our town. So hope they're around another 20 years. Also want to recognize two employees who are on our staff that have been employees of the town for 10-plus years. And Scott Townsend, he's been here for 10 years. And Adrian Cowan, who's been here for 15 years. So this, this month. So congratulations to those guys. Yeah. Congratulations to them. And just some of the things, other, last thing I got here, we're working on. And, and, and they'll bring this forward to the town commission. And last Thursday, we sat down with, if you guys recall, we signed a proposal to start looking at the streetscape down Tub Street from the trail all the way down to 50. So last week, we kind of kicked that off with our design professionals and they came in and met and they walked the streets and they looked at everything and they questioned and met with myself and Mike and Elise and started putting together some initial drawings and stuff. And, and they're going to put all this stuff together and then come back to us and present it to everybody, some ideas or their ideas. And then we can critique and look at and see what we can do. So it's kind of exciting to do that. On top of this project too as well, we had Mike there with some input on the infrastructure needs. Obviously, there's infrastructure needs that need to happen under the streets, whether it be, you know, upgrading our water lines and sewer as well. Stormwater is another big factor that's got to happen there. So they'll be looking at all of that. And then one of the last things that they're going to look at is our land development codes, that overlay that area right there. And, and inside that, the problem with our codes nowadays is they, they conflict and they hit each other. So there's some, you know, confusion on that. So they're going to try to straighten all that out and they'll have that. But I'm excited to see what they, what they bring back to us for us and our resident and the residents to take a look on that. So other than that, that's all I have, guys.
Right of all hearts and minds are satisfied. This adjournance is now 8:50, 8:50 PM.
Thank you.